The four bands of the Spokane Tribe of Indians. Upper Band, Middle Band, Lower Band, and Shewillaband. Since time immemorial, the Spokane Tribe of Indians has lived and cared for these grounds, identifying themselves as flesh of the earth. We pay our respects to their elders, past, present, and emerging. We show gratitude to the land, river, and peoples who have been fishing, hunting, harvesting, and gathering here for generations. May we learn from one another's stories so that we may nurture the relationship of the people of the Spokane Tribe and all those share this land. And with that, we will continue on, uh, proposed agenda and your adoptions or changes of the agenda.
I have one change that, uh, the chairman's report should reflect that we have a new chairman.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? To Carrie's. And the approval of the two thousand twenty-four bills and contributions. Approved with the April sixteenth, four minutes.
I approve the April sixteenth, four minutes as presented.
Thank you. Any extensions? Favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Bills and contributions. If you've had a chance to take a look at those.
So I approve the bills and contributions for May twenty twenty-four in the amount of one million, one hundred eighty-nine thousand, five hundred and fifty-four dollars.
Okay, tenure soon.
Thank you.
Senator.
Thank you. Opposed? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you, Carrie's, and now we will pass it over to Nicole to give us an update on finance.
Thank you, Gary, and thank you for your kind words. Much appreciated. I feel very fortunate to have such an awesome board. You guys are great. Um, sorry for my giant face on the screen. That's pretty awkward, but, um, it'll be short, I'm sure. Um, can everybody hear me, hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, cool. Thank you. I'm still gonna start, well, start out with the, uh, library operations update for April of twenty twenty-four. And for our cash and investments trend, so for April, we now have the ability to pay a hundred and seventeen days of operating costs. That's eight days less than the month prior. And our available, uh, cash and investments balance, which does include the reserve for capital and is a net of encumbrances, is now five, uh, five million, eight hundred ninety-three thousand, one hundred and five dollars. Uh, for the expenditure trend for operations, the expenditures for April were one million, one hundred fifty-two dollars and, uh, sorry, one hundred and fifty-two thousand, eight hundred and sixty-nine. Of that amount, uh, sixty-five percent was for personnel. Our library books and materials were one hundred thirty-two thousand, nine forty-seven. Interfund charges totaled fifty-eight thousand, five fifty-eight. Uh, this does include a first quarter charge for, um, city, city, uh, indirect cost. That's newer this year. It pays, pays for things like the mayor's office and city legal things, things of, of that nature. Uh, we paid for central branch staff office moves. Uh, the furniture and the amount of labor and install for that was forty-eight thousand, twenty-three dollars. There was a lot of staff moving, um, in that, in that process. Uh, everybody, I think, is settled and, and happy now. It's, it's much more, uh, functional. Uh, the third-party security, uh, costs with, with, uh, Securitas, our, our contractor, was forty thousand dollars and sixty-eight. Our utility costs totaled thirty thousand, six hundred and fifty-five. We also received our final invoice for the snow plowing services of the winter season in the amount of sixteen thousand, thirty-two dollars. Are there any questions on operations before I go on to the bond update?
So I have a question. I was noticing that our gray bars in the, in the graph at the bottom for twenty twenty-four, you know, consistently a little bit higher uh, than, than the bars in the past years. Um, I recall that we've added a couple of FTEs. Is that part of the primary reason for those expenses being higher or?
The primary, yes, so we've, we've added FTEs. We're, we also have a higher, higher usage of our, uh, temporary seasonal staff. So our, our pages and, and substitutes as well. And then some of it is just general, general in inflation.
Sure.
So, yeah.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you, Senator, but I missed it. The charges from the city, is that a regular charge or just in the annual?
Um, it's going to be quarterly.
Quarterly, okay, thank you.
Yep, no problem. That, uh, all questions for operations? I'm picking, cool, thank you. Okay, so for our bond fund update, here's, um, just a quick snapshot of all of our project costs since twenty eighteen. Uh, this is by, by location, and so our remaining encumbrance is currently, uh, left, left to spend is one million, eight hundred fifty-five thousand, two hundred and eight dollars. Um, so during the month of May, this, the city completed their, um, fixed asset, their fixed asset upload review. Um, this was for the December and closeout for the twenty twenty-three year. This, this finalizes that, that year and everything ties to what was spent in twenty twenty-three. So just for some context, we have this, um, an Excel spreadsheet that's uploaded, and each single asset has up to nineteen fields of, of data. So those, those uploads can be tens of, of thousands of records that are maintained through, throughout the entire year. Um, let's see, so the other update is something pretty exciting. So the twenty-four seven kiosk, uh, that we had stored at, at our facility site, um, that was moved to its new home at the STA Five Mile location. So the, the initial install went really smoothly and final work is, is still, um, underway with that. The final step will be the install of, of the artwork that's, um, in the form of a vinyl wrap that, uh, that will go on that, on that kiosk. Um, I do want to, uh, give a shout out to Tara Newman, our, our community technology manager. So we, we did run, run into an issue with the, with the fiber at, uh, at, at that location for the Five Mile kiosk. Uh, so currently where it sits, it really doesn't meet the needs for, for the, uh, connectivity that, that, um, kiosk requires. Um, so she's been working with Avista and, um, to, it, it could have been a very costly project, up to thirty, uh, thirty thousand dollars, but we were, we're gonna be moving that, that electrical pole. Um, and with, with her, her, uh, dedication and, and working with the Vista, that cost is gonna be, uh, twelve thousand, six, six hundred to move that post. Um, that, that money, of course, we don't have any more bond dollars, so it's going to come out of operations. Um, and then for the, do you have any questions on bond before I give a, a quick update for our business office? Okay, cool, thank you. Um, so the, for a business office update, something pretty exciting. Again, there's some, some movement with P cards. Um, so we, we do have, the city currently has a contract with, with US Bank. And so for our purchasing cards there, we are actually moving to, um, a, a new system where all of our, uh, P card users are going to be able to upload their, their receipts electronically. Those will be reviewed and approved electronically as well. Um, one thing that's, uh, great that US Bank is able to do for us is to re- retain all of the records for a total of, of six years. Uh, that's the retention period that's required by, um, the Washington State, uh, uh, sorry, the, uh, Washington Secretary of State. Um, and also, uh, we did get some training scheduled, uh, today. Those are gonna be taking place the, let me double check. First, first week of June, so we've, we've got those underway as well, so. Uh, thank you so much for the, for your, your attention. Much appreciated.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions for Nicole? All right, so, Carrie's.
All right, thank you. I am here, uh, subbing in for Andrew Chance, who was not able to be at the meeting tonight. I am Kara Somalet, Deputy Director. Here's Spokane Public Pipeline. Um, so I'll be going through Andrew's Executive Director's report to the board. Um, in our community and professional contacts for this month, there were a few really interesting things. One was that, uh, Library Journal designed, held their design institute at our libraries in early May. Uh, that led to a national convergence of various library professionals and architects coming to look at our newly designed buildings and ooh and ah over them for a while. Um, Alina and Amanda and Jason and Andrew all led panel discussions, uh, for Library Journal, which was a pretty cool thing for us to be able to do for the professional publication in our field. Uh, we also did some bus tours of various locations, so all in all, the participants got to see Central, Shadle, The Hive, and Liberty Park. Um, we have been working with other libraries across the state to try to coordinate uh, implementation or our, how we're going to be handling implementation of Senate Bill five, four, 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 which effectively restricts open carry firearms in places frequented by children. So the library is joining the ranks of zoos and aquariums that are getting the new protected status. Our initial stance, um, as we expect this to roll out, is to lead with education first, so when people show up with an open carry weapon at, uh, one of our facilities, our security team or management will approach the person to let them know that the law has changed and advise them what's gonna be allowed going forward. Uh, so we're gonna, that's what most of the libraries in the state are opting to do, rather than trying to be, uh, really forceful with, uh, enforcing the law right at the first offense. Uh, so we'll see how that's going uh, as we progress. Uh, and also Laura and, and Shelby were able to join us for our ceremony with Thrive International, celebrating the Nevada Street Partnership. That was a pretty cool thing. It made, uh, the whole idea very concrete for everybody attending to see the mayor there and Andrew there and Mark Finney from Thrive International, just all talk about, uh, what a cool collaboration it is and got together over taco trucks and sparkling cider. Uh, it was a, a good time. Um, in our DEI efforts, our next stack book discussion will be Braiding Sweetgrass by Robin Wall Kimmerer. In May, we have been highlighting, or we had highlighted, uh, resources for Jewish American Heritage Month, Mental Health Awareness Month, and Asian American and Native Hawaiian Pacific Islander Heritage Month. There's a pretty amazing display, um, that Vanessa's team coordinated up on the third floor of the Central Library that you should definitely check out if you haven't had a chance to. Uh, learn a bit, a little bit more about the history of the Asian community in Spokane. Um, in June, we're gonna be offering a family pride celebration for youth and their caregivers. Um, it's, uh, getting quite a lot of notice on social media, um, as some of our LGBTQ plus programming does from time to time. Um, right now, most of the reaction has been positive and most of it's been done via social media, but we're keeping an eye on the situation uh, to make sure that it stays safe for everyone involved. Um, for our staff spotlight, this, in April, went to, uh, Abe Green. Abe is one of our new in-house security guards. And, uh, he was confronted with a very unlikely, uh, task of putting out a brush fire at Central, um, which he did very calmly and efficiently, and we were all very grateful that it was an incident that just came to pass without a, a whole lot of angst around it. So we're trying to figure out what exactly to do, um, with that space now that all the grass is burned out. Um, but I'm confident that we'll find something, maybe something that isn't flammable. Um, Andrew continues to hold office hours at our different locations for staff to connect and chat. Um, so he's always available in that way.
How often does he do that?
He does those, see, once a month at every location.
Yes, six times.
Uh, we have begun, we have officially begun our work on the Indian Trail lawn replacement. Um, so you've heard me talk about this plenty of times now, but, um, they're going through the process of pulling up the grass in order to put in a, uh, an experiential garden of native edible and medicinal plants. Um, so the idea is that over time, uh, this garden area will be built in by the community as, uh, members of Jason and Vanessa's team put together, um, programming that, that allows for the education of the planting as well as the, uh, the development of those spaces. So the first thing that we're gonna see is the grass removal and the irrigation installed to move forward. Um, that garden likely will not be fully established for probably five years or so, but it is really exciting to get it going and turn that underused space into something that'll be fun and functional for the community. Um, in our relationship with the city, we continue to take part in our early budget discussions. You probably saw, uh, some of the news articles about the various budget issues that the city is navigating right now. Um, there's monthly meetings that are being held to discuss the various struggles. Andrew sent out a letter of reassurance to our staff, letting everybody know that, um, our plan is to maintain funding and expenditures at our current level. Um, that the, the woes that are currently impacting the city will not be impacting us. Uh, so trying to give staff some peace of mind that those things they're seeing in the news will not be impacting us because of the efforts that we made to head those issues off of the past in prior years. And lastly, the Washington State Department of Labor and Industries, uh, cited us with six violations around our handling and training around bloodborne pathogens and the use of a hazardous chemical for sanitation. Uh, we're well on our way to correcting all of those issues, and the citation has been posted publicly for the public and staff to see. Um, mostly the, uh, reconciling that had to do with getting rid of the offending chemical, um, and also providing our facility staff with better training and better access to PTE um, in a consistent manner. And I am happy to answer any questions.
When did they discover the violation?
The violations, was that April?
March.
Thank you, Natalie.
And Sam.
Um, oh, I'm curious, uh, how, how often we're observing open carry in libraries.
So open carry doesn't happen all that often. Um, it, and it's usually not that big of a, an issue for us, um, just because Washington has been open carry for so long, it's, uh, it's not been a thing that has called all that much attention. Uh, we've, we've seen it a couple of times with less well-known things. So usually when you think open carry, you're thinking firearms. Um, we don't anticipate that firearms will have a tremendous impact for us here, but we're, uh, more along the lines of like personal safety weapons that some of our, uh, some of our customers bring in, whether that might be baseball bats or knives or machetes, those kinds of things have always um, been allowed because of the open carry law, and those things will be restricted now, and that's where we're kind of waiting to see exactly what the impact will be and what our educational, uh, efforts will achieve.
It was resulted in an increase in your security?
No, the idea is that the security levels stay the same. It's just more of the educational effort, um, and obviously if there was, if we did see a sudden uptick in, um, either demonstrations around open carry, which is totally possible, or just, you know, people, we, we find that, uh, the situation is just much more, uh, intense than we anticipated. Then we might be looking at something along those lines. But right now, our current plans are to stay at our current level, we're stacking in our current strategies. It doesn't change things a whole lot for us. It's mostly just a thing for us to keep on the radar.
And did you say that there's going to be training for staff around that in terms of how to speak with people who may be bringing things in?
Yeah, so predominantly that training, um, will be, or most of those conversations will happen with our safety and security staff, but we have released a video for staff to be able to learn how to talk about it and how to address it, because we hope that those issues will be entirely non-confrontational and just educational.
Could I please interrupt really quick on the LNI, um, audit? I just wanted to give some, some clarification on the dates. So the, the audit, um, it did start on January sixteenth, and they, they completed that on April first. And so we were, we were issued the notice on, on May third.
Thank you.
Let's see, uh, Councilmember Dylan will not be joining us today, so we can move directly to Amanda.
Okay, great. Hi, everyone. So, um, I'm pleased to let you know that the SPO Marketing Communication Team won two PR Exchange Awards. Um, that is an award presented by the Core Group of American Library Association, and more than three hundred and fifty people or organizations applied for this award and only twenty-four won, and we were two of those awards. Um, it was for our twenty twenty, twenty twenty-three work on the Be Your Best Self video and also Latin City Global Magazine, so a digital award and a print award. Um, we, I'll skip these two others because Kara's covered them in his report, but we're also offering a limited edition, um, Expo seventy-four anniversary library card available at all locations and at the Vendor Village booths at Expo seventy-four while supplies last. And you can see a small thumbnail picture of what that looks like. It's one of the vintage photos from our archive, um, printed on a card. Um, and so those have been really fun to promote. Um, some of our most visited webpages in the last month have been Shadle Park Library, Central Library. This is an ongoing trend that some of those key locations or top visited locations are also our top visited locations on the website. In addition to meeting rooms, explore all digital and research tools A to Z. Our top social media content in April was about Earth Day, the block printing, uh, event at The Hive, the Plant Swap Expo seventy-four, and our Right to Read Day and Library Worker Appreciation Day, which happened in early April. Um, and then our most read blogs for this month have been the Friends of the Library Book Sale, which happened here earlier in April or in late April. Um, Tips for Leading a Book Club Discussion. I, sometimes I can't predict which ones are gonna be tough. That's an old blog. Someone discovered it, and a lot of people are reading it right now. Um, the Asian American Native Hawaiian and Pacific Islander Blog, our Earth Day Blog, and our blog about our upcoming Poetry Salon, which Sharma is coordinating for June sixth, June first, the first ever, um, inland Northwest Poetry Salon. That is coming up, and we had five media mentions in April, um, about the Thrive Partnership, the Book Sale, Arab American Heritage Month, and um, Asian American Native Hawaiian and Pacific Islander. Any questions for me?
Uh, your Facebook interactions are down. What's the?
So here's what happens, is we have a couple of months of great Facebook interactions, and then we go back to normal, and it looks like they're going down, but it's just kind of more normal. Um, so if we've had a couple of months of like really viral posts, I, I predict that's what's happening.
Yeah, hold you.
Carrie, you haven't been commenting as much, um, on our posts, so we directly credit that to you.
Yeah.
Sorry, go ahead, please.
Oh, I'd just like to say congratulations on the awards. I, I remember that Be Your Best Self video. That, I'm not surprised that got more. That was really, really wonderful, so. It's wonderful to see you getting recognition.
Thank you.
For Amanda. Thank you. Jason, programming, what's up?
Well, uh, big news is, it's not that big, we changed the name of the value score to the impact score. Kind of described more what the impact of the programming on the community is. Some staff were kind of feeling the value was assessing their value as human beings, so, yeah, let's take that out of there. We also changed the, broke the calculator tool to a youth component and an adult component now. Used to be trying to make them both work together, but realized there's just stuff that's different about the programming. So there's two different scores for them now, two different calculators. Um, three hundred and sixty-eight total events in April, uh, which is down from four hundred last time, but we took, uh, spring break off from storytimes and programs, so there was one week less programming there, so. So we had five thousand, six hundred and thirty-one people come to events, um, in the month. Some highlights, uh, Spokane Print Fest, which took place at The Hive, with two hundred and sixty-seven people come to that. We partnered with Trans Spokane and Spokane Pride to host a, uh, clothing swap at Central on the third floor, so people could come and get clothes for free. Um, it was a really great event. A hundred plus people came to that. Allowed people who maybe aren't as comfortable going into stores, buying clothes, for whatever reason that is, to have a safe place to come do that. Uh, Mason Neal, our youth environmental programming specialist, uh, put together an Earth Day family celebration at Central, which was a huge success, and they put a lot of work into coordinating that event. Hundred and sixty-two people came to that. Uh, it's fantastic. Um, hosted seven events during the Gitlin Festival at our libraries. The highest impact score for adult programming was the Plant Swap, which happened right here at this library and everywhere in this library. Had four hundred and sixty-two people at that, uh, for youth. It was the Earth Day event, the highest attendance and the highest, uh, pack score. But the highest attendance for adult programming was the SNAP, um, Spring Resource Carnival, which took place at The Hive, so The Hive had a lot of big stuff. Yes? Any questions you have?
Thank you. Okay, come brings us to business. And uh, thirteen A, approval of revisions to the Code of Conduct. Samantha?
Hi.
Hi.
Um, so in lieu of the changing RCW, uh, this change revision to the Code of Conduct is super simple. I just added the RCW to the list of um, those observed in the carrying firearms, not compliance with laws section, so just approval of that addition is all we're asking.
And volunteering at the library.
Yes. Uh, so for that one, um, made a couple of edits to reflect more what has been happening with volunteers. The last time it was reviewed was in twenty-eleven, so it's been some time since then. Um, the two key changes, besides just some formatting, um, updates were um, volunteers rather than being at least eleven years of age, uh, updated to sixteen. And then also we did remove the word interest from the line, "Every attempt will be made to place volunteers in positions which match their skills, interests, and time commitments." And the reason for this was that, uh, feedback has told me that volunteers are given not a lot of choice in how they assist. We kind of have some set tasks for volunteers, so, um, we wanted it to reflect more what we are asking them to do when they come, so.
So we have two action items. Thirteen A, approval of revision to the Code of Conduct, and thirteen B, approval of revision to volunteering at the library policy. So let's do them one at a time. Thirteen A, approval of revision to the Code of Conduct. Any questions, comments? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right. Today, and thirteen B.
Second?
All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Okay. Ryan Tucker?
Hey.
You're up.
Oh. Remember this thing? I'm gonna be able to watch this board meeting forever because it's on the greatest format of all time, VHS. It will never die. Oh. Do you have that beginning? Uh, first slide, yeah, okay.
There's sound.
Right, rules. None of that one, the next one. Sorry, this was supposed to go during my, along the way. Yeah. The epitome, the height of technology. Thirty years ago was, was this, right? Yeah, well, uh, you know, then like, uh, a million other camcorders came out. Uh, to the next slide, I think there's, uh, and, oh no, how time flies. Now I don't have a VCR, and people call it a VHS player, like they can't even remember that we all owned a VCR and called them VCR. Um, but, oh yeah, and then the next slide? Oh, well, that plays.
Sorry.
There we go. Look at all those, and now we use that crap. Okay.
Uh, used almost every one of them.
Yeah, I bet. Um, but I bought every camcorder there ever was, and, uh, I collected all of this crap. I never threw it away or gave it away, so I still had it. Uh, and a while ago, Vanessa Strange was like, hey, some libraries have a digitization station, and I was like, hey, I got all that crap. It would cost us nothing, and we would, uh, uh, offer this awesome service that people pay like hundreds of dollars to, like, convert a VHS tape.
There's that little sign on Maple.
Total ripoff. People out of business. Total ripoff, a lot of business. So, we can convert, actually go back to that one, uh, Mini DV, uh, Hi8, uh, SVHS, VHSC, vinyl, Super 8, eight millimeter VHS, uh, audio reel-to-reel, Beta, cassette tapes, CDs, film negatives, and slides. And uh, I even have a region-coded VCR, so if people from another country had VHS tapes that, you know, those are PAL and NTSC, those were the formats, so uh, you know, if you're from Saudi Arabia, you, and you couldn't find a VCR here that would play your tape, I have one, so you can bring it. Um, and then yeah, I have CED, which nobody recorded on CED, but I'm really proud that I own that one, because they only made it for six years, and it's vinyl, and the stylist reads audio and video. So I keep it in there just to show people. Um, and then here's a little taste of what we've converted in the um, studio. These have sound, I don't know. Well, it's stopped, gotta stop. Here's this kid, he's in his forties now. This was a show that the library put on in the eighties.
Do you like tree? I do, do you like talking about books with your friends? I do, do you like parties and fun stuff like that? I do, and if you do, then that may be for you. His next few minutes will serve as an introduction to, yeah, the Annual Design Committee for the Spokane Public Library.
That's eighty-six, you want to enter, enter, the I choose adventure area. J C point, all W. Uh, somebody converted their Jade Fund or workout tape that they've still been using to this day. Uh, and she's like, wow, really, you can make it so I can just bust it on my phone, and I was like, yeah. Here's some old pictures that some people converted. Uh, here's a Super 8 from nineteen sixty-four, of this gal's Christmas, some of her aunts, uncles, or grandmas, grandpas, that's her as the baby. Wow, cool glasses, everything is so awesome. Uh, the Super 8 conversion is, is really fun to do because uh, I don't, it like chokes me up, I don't know any of these people, but it's so wild to watch, and then to watch them see themselves as a baby or see people who are gone in their life later, you know, um, and uh, yeah, in short time, we've offered this, it's already racked up to about a hundred hours of things being converted. Uh, and watching, like I said, watching these memories with people is like the sweetest, funnest thing, and I'm, like I said, I collect all this stuff, so I'm kind of a nerd and fascinated by seeing people's old stuff, and really helping through some weird tapes to come in at some time, but we get people all over that are coming in to use this, I just had a email this morning from a gal in Close Falls, who wants to come out, she's like, I have a library card, and I'm like, well, we have drop-in time on Monday, so you can just come in, I'll show you how to do it. Uh, I've also showed people, because they still have a lot of the equipment, they just don't know how to do it, and really, fifteen dollar attachment. RCA cable that plugs into your computer. Uh, but it, the Super 8 thing's a little different, but anyway. And then lastly, there was a guy, this, the last slide here, this guy converted some stuff for his uh, his grandmother who just passed away, but uh, says, I let the cat out of the bag, sent that video to about a hundred of my family members. Response was over the top, tears of joy, from so many who thought that was a lost video. Especially my grandmother, she got to see all her children happy, healthy, together one more time. Oh, so sweet. Uh, he was really getting down to the wire, he wanted to do it for Mother's Day, but he did it early, because she was not doing well. She got to see it all, so sweet, so sweet, I love it. Uh, it's a super fun thing, and there, and a lot of people are using it, so, pretty great.
Thanks, Ryan.
Yeah. And I was sitting there, that, that yak thing was, it's like, there's a lot of KSPS people in there.
One too.
Yeah.
What I've been able to discern over the last several months. Thanks, Ryan.
Yep.
And would you let us know how you can, how people can reach you so that you can do this? So if you want to go ahead and put something up or something out so that we could do that, that would be great.
It is, Live at City Local. There's a whole feature that, I believe it did, it's fantastic, and it's, it's a little blurb about the digitization station, but it's mostly about, they get a studio, they're mostly like, how to hook me there, again, through websites, the same, you book it me, like, you're gonna make a review, same way.
Perfect.
Also, if you want to shoot on any of this stuff, I've had a couple of kids, some of them are vaccinated by this tech, they're like, can we, can you do it, do you know that? Absolutely, my dream.
I've been saving it for all these years.
Beauty of that is it doesn't weigh twenty pounds anymore.
Right. I have shoulder, permanent shoulder damage.
Any other questions or comments for Ryan? Ryan, thanks for doing it.
Yeah.
Okay, any agenda items or changes to be agenda? Anyone, anyone? Okay, public comment?
There's no commentary on the slide.
Okay, our next.
Public comment?
Yes, go ahead.
I'm interested in how the library can expand its influence connection with the community. Uh, there would be an online connection, and someone would be interested in discussing that. I'm open to the possibility.
Good, thank you, would you leave your contact information with us? Be happy to get in touch with you. Thank you very much. Any other comments? Our next regular meeting is at The Hive on June eighteenth. Um, we have an executive session planned, I don't have one, so, going once, going twice. Thank you very much, we are adjourned.